I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order at 7:03 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as we sit down, may I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the purchase of real estate? Sarah moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to return to regular session? Marcy moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor?
That was Marcy's turn.
Marcy and Sarah. Okay, so next item up on our agenda is an update on flood mitigation projects by Ed Gentile. I just want to say for the public that we are fully cognizant of the devastation that our residents and our businesses suffered last summer. And this is a problem that I don't think a single day goes by that we don't work on at some point in the day. So it's a difficult problem. There are no easy solutions. And Ed is here to tell us what has happened so far. And we will be having these updates periodically to let our residents know what we are working on. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you very much for having me. Like you said, we do work on these pretty much every day. There's some conversation regarding, I just have eight projects here in front of me, but there's more that goes on for infrastructure regarding stormwater and flooding that's happened through the past year. We will definitely need more updates. You'll understand why when I go through where we stand now with the studies that we have started and some of the work that's ongoing. More than happy to come back and update you whenever you need it. Or when I speak to the First Selectman, let her know that I have some progress made and some good news to bring forward. I'm going to go down through the projects that I've been working on. We'll get through, there are separate flood studies that we're doing and some storm drainage infrastructure upgrades that we're doing. And then we'll get into some bridges and dams. I think those are important, too. I think the folks should understand that we did have damage to our infrastructure throughout town as well as on private property. So first, let me just get into the studies. Bailey Avenue is probably one of the smaller ones, but it is critical. It is over by Weston Leroy, Bailey Avenue. There's Cummings Brook that crosses West Avenue. And just south of that is a culvert under the railroad bridge. We targeted this area because it is not marked as a flood hazard zone, and it flooded significantly. We are currently working with tie and bond on the study. The study is slated to cost about $35,000, and it's about 50% completed right now. Report delivery date is slated now for the middle to end of May. And when I say it's 50% complete, a guideline would be, they are actually working through the hydraulic models now to determine why it flooded or should it have flooded, and what the next steps would be, what to do to mitigate that flooding if that's actually an option. Second area would be the salt box area that comes off the Boston Post Road. It's in the general vicinity of Coachlamp Pleasant and Tomcina, and is bordered to the west by Garden. This watershed is about 55 acres. That comes down through those pipes, across underneath the Boston Post Road to Seagate, and then out to Holly Pond. So they're going to track that. They're going to do a study on that whole watershed to see what it actually transpired there. That study is going to run around $49,000, and it's currently about 40% complete. They're working on Salt Box and Bailey at about the same time. So the delivery date is generally around the same time. Also, we're looking at the end of May to get some results back that we can go through and see what they found. Third study is the Grove Street Tilly Pond area. That study is going to start on Old Kings Highway, work its way up through Corbin, across the Post Road, Brook Street, Grove Street, through Squab Lane, underneath the railroad tracks, through the parking lot, Coon's Lot and property, cross West Avenue to Tilly Pond. That area is being analyzed for two flooding locations. One north of the railroad, and two in the Brook Street and Grove Street area. Currently, that study is slated to be, to cost about $43,000, half of which is being picked up by a private partnership. So the town's portion is about $21.5. We signed the agreement in March of this year after getting approval from the RTM on the February 28th. Currently, it's about 10% complete. They just started putting the maps together for this. Their delivery date is early September of this year to have that study done with some results for us to look at. We do have a couple DPW infrastructure projects that don't require any further engineering than myself or Darren to look at. Our highway supervisor has been on the scene, too. We have some upgrades on West Avenue where we actually found a pipe that had collapsed under West Avenue that was causing one of our catch basins to bypass and the flood to go down to a low-lying area and not in the pipe. Apologize for that, fun. Also, in the area of West Avenue Fairfield, we're going to add a couple more catch basins, increase the size of one of them that's there also. That should help with that low-lying area where Fairfield comes out onto West Avenue. And one more upgrade in that general area also is up on Elm Street. There's a couple catch basin upgrades. So we identified a couple spots where we need some help. We're planning on doing that now in the next two months. Bridges and dams. Let's talk about the Gorms Pond Dam. Temporary repair was made on the damage in February, late February. Cost the town about $16,000. DPW will continue to monitor that area to make sure that temporary repair holds while we do the design for the permanent repair and gather funds to complete the permanent repair. April 25th, we signed an agreement with the consultant. And we're looking at a three-to-four month turnaround. We actually asked them to expedite this so that we can get working on this dam sooner rather than later. Preliminary estimated cost for the repair is $1.2 million. We have an insurance claim to look at first for funding, and then FEMA funds if that's not possible. And speaking with the Board of Finance after that, it would be some type of bonding. But that's just letting out the possibilities for funding as we go down the road. Same time, we were doing inspections on the Gorms Pond Dam. We also had the consultant do inspection on the Rings End Road Bridge. And it does appear to need some abutment joint repair as well as replacement and riprap over our footings. Estimated cost, $136,000. We do have ARPA funds slated for that repair. We are in the process of developing a scope of work and the bid package currently. Next project I want to talk about is Old Kings Highway South. That was another one that was impacted significantly by both flooding events. It overtopped both of the bridges. We did have it inspected also at the same time as we were doing the Gorms Pond Dam and Ridge and Rings End Road Bridge. While the consultant's here, we gave him four locations to look at. This is the third one. It will require us to do some concrete and asphalt repair deck work. The estimated cost of this is about $90,000. It will be funded out of ARPA funds. And again, we are in the process of developing the scope and the bid package right now. And the final one that we were notified to take a look at by the DOT was the Camp Avenue Bridge. Though it's not critical at this point, it does require us to do some asphalt deck repair and some sidewalk repairs, more surface-related than anything else. Disappeared the bridge abutments and the scour-proof riprap had stayed in place during the storm. But like I said, the DOT notified us of certain bridges that had gotten impacted. Surface waters above the top of the decking. And they asked the towns to go out and do the inspection. So though it's not critical, we are developing a scope of work. The cost to do those repairs is about $10,000. So since I don't have the funds yet to do the repairs, and they're not critical, we're just developing the scope and holding on to that until we have some funds to do that. I may ask for it in next year's capital budget so that I can go out there and do that work. That's currently the projects for flooding and damage to our infrastructure that I have ongoing. I'm here to answer any other questions. I do have some other projects that I'm working on that have to do with it. Neuro night train station is another one. If you'd like to hear about that, I have some notes on that one. I can talk about that really quick if you'd like. That detention system that's planned for that parking lot is about 1,800 feet long with four-by-four concrete galleries. It's going to require the removal of about 5,000 cubic yards of soil. I just obtained approval from the DOT to start that and bid that project March 31st. Still waiting on some paperwork for them, a lease agreement to allow a contractor to go and do the work. It doesn't stop me from putting the bid package together right now, which is what I'm doing.
Is that on the north side or the south side of? Is that the north side or the south side of the parking lot?
It'll be on the north side.
Okay.
Closer to the.
To the retail spaces. Okay.
Correct. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
I have a quick one. On Gorms Pond, for FEMA, is there a match there, or is that 90/10?
From what I understand, FEMA will, okay, I think it's 75% is covered? I'm sorry.
Okay.
All I know is they will cover what the insurance company, Duffable, will not.
Okay.
Or whatever they won't cover. And I believe it's 75% of that.
Okay. So we tap insurance first.
That's the first step. Still waiting to hear back from them on that.
Any questions, Frank?
Hi, thank you for doing all this work. I know a lot of the residents were very frustrated after last summer. If you had to prioritize some of these fixes, what do you see would be kind of the main area to focus on from these three studies? Or is there one? Are they all kind of similar?
We're running them concurrently for a reason. I think they're all critical to the folks that have homes or businesses in those areas.
Yep, okay.
Just sorry I couldn't get the Grove Street one going a little bit sooner, but I can tell you, we're not the only town tapping these engineers and consultants for these works. So the sooner I got them in, the sooner they're going to move along. We do have a good team for the Grove Street one, which I think is more driven by the businesses downtown and what had happened to them.
Yeah.
Bailey was just something that, it caught me off guard only because I didn't think that area would ever flood. And I've seen the culvert underneath the railroad bridge. So that's why we're doing that. We want to make sure that we're classifying that area properly. If it belongs in a flood hazard zone, then we're going to look to make sure that's classified properly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Ed, thank you. I know you're really, really busy on all of this, and I appreciate the projects all going forward, not prioritizing. Terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next is First Selectmen's report. The weekly COVID positivity rate as of last Tuesday was 5.6%, down from 7.4% the week before, but it does still remain in the red category. On Great Island, I am continuing to research all facets of the Great Island property, including but not limiting, nominative to funding and possible uses. Meetings are held regularly to gather information that will allow us to understand the full potential of acquiring this land for the community. Each spring, CCM, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, along with the Connecticut Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, and the Connecticut Department of Public Health holds a symposium which attracts hundreds of local public safety officials and others responsible for responding to mass emergencies. Mark McEwen and I participated in this statewide municipal government full-day event. Topics ranged from cybersecurity to drug trafficking to flood mitigation to volunteers helping in the field of EMS over the last two years. Our EMS department will continue to utilize the educational opportunities to stay current on best practices for Darien. A request has been made to hang the Pride flag at Town Hall again this year. For the remainder of this year, town will allow flags that were hung last year to be hung for the same period of time this year. The Board of Selectmen has talked about establishing a flag policy, and we will be working on that. We also, my office, has received numerous messages regarding excessive noise. So we currently follow the state statutes, and the Board of Selectmen will be discussing initiating a town policy. Earth Day, very big, April 23rd. Nature Center, the Darien Nature Center, celebrated at Cherry Lawn. Local environment organizations were represented throughout the park with activities and information for all ages to enjoy and inspire sustainable living habits. Members of the Darien Advisory Committee on Sustainability and the Beautification Commission sponsored a compost give-back day at the Darien Recycling Center on April 23rd. And I joined volunteers from the Advisory Commission on Coastal Waters and the Senior Men's Association to clear trash along the shoreline. So we began picking up trash along the Goodwise River Road from Pear Tree Point Beach to the bridge. And then we went to the West Bank off of Juniper, and we collected over 350 pounds. So thank you to those two groups. April is Volunteer Month, and we have a lot of volunteers in town. I had the pleasure of attending the Community Fund's annual volunteer recognition event where many outstanding volunteers were recognized. Anne Reed was honored for her work supporting Darien's vaccine clinics during the pandemic. And Sarah Newman was recognized for her part in the Outstanding Volunteer Team Strategy Group along with Karen Brennan and Deborah Hertz. Thank you, Sarah. The Darien Sail and Power Squadron holds a flare up every three years. It was delayed because of COVID, so this was the first in five years. Marine flares last three years, and there's no good way to get rid of them. And it's illegal just to fire them off or to just dispose of them. So with the permission from the Coast Guard and under the supervision of the squadron, flares were shot off at Weed Beach last Saturday. The marine units of the police and the Roat and Fire Departments and Post 53 were on hand, as was Fire Marshal Bob Bush, who did hands-on training in the use of fire extinguishers. Last week, I attended a weekly wrap-up session at Post 53. Adult and student volunteers, as well as many parents, were present for the meeting. And it was a great opportunity for me to listen and to learn and to share with them how much the whole community appreciates what they do. I attended the Song for Charlie event to raise awareness on increased access online to what are perceived to be prescription pills, things like Percocet or Xanax or things like this. These are, in fact, actually chemical compound-based fentanyl pills. They're fake pills that are produced in illegal labs. It's very hard to determine that they're fake. And one pill can carry a lethal dose. So it's not something that you build up. 20% of the pills in a batch are fatal, one pill. The media, these kids, and it's really kids from like 12, from age 12 to age 22, they're being targeted on social media, on TikTok or Snapchat or sites like that. And they're selling these pills very cheaply to kids. So I'm saying this because I'm asking parents to please have this conversation with your kids soon. May 10th will be National Fentanyl Awareness Day, and ribbons will be hung along the Post Road in recognition. I would like to connect the organizers of this event, Song for Charlie, with our Thriving Youth Task Force because I feel that there are more ways that we can connect and promote awareness on this. And that would be better for everyone. I met with Senator Chris Murphy's Senior Outreach Assistant, Trevon Diaz. And I explained that right now, two areas of focus are mental health and flooding, as Ed just went over. We discussed grant opportunities and how best to work with Senator Murphy's office for federal support. In 2016, there was a study of Holly Pond that was completed. And the town of Darien is working in conjunction with the city of Stanford to address the recommendations put forth in this study. We have a new harbor master. We received the official appointment from the governor for John Kena. Mr. Kena has been appointed to manage Darien's harbors and navigable waterways until June of 2025. And at the last town newsletter, I reminded everyone of the safety measures that you should be taking to protect yourself and have a fun and safe boating season. Speaking of seasons, Little League just kicked off. Mike Burke and I attended the Darien Little League season kickoff at Magwan. It was terrific to see, I don't know, Mike, there were probably 8,000 kids. Okay, maybe there weren't 8,000, but it seemed like that. It was just really, really a terrific day. Tributes earlier today, I received a message from Chief Anderson regarding the passing of Darien Police Sergeant, retired Clifford W. DeForest, at the age of 91. Chief Anderson noted that Cliff served the Darien Police Department and the town of Darien with honor and distinction for 26 and a half years, and was exceedingly proud, even over his long retirement, to be considered a life member of the Darien Police Department. And on another note of retirement, many of you have had the pleasure of meeting or working with Jamie Gore in the Park and Rec Department. And while we are sad to have her leave, we are excited that she will be moving on to be, take the Director of Park and Rec role for the town of Woodbury in Connecticut. So we wish her the very best there. And we really enjoyed having her in Darien. And that's my report. Kate?
You know, with Jamie leaving, we also lost Peanut. We tried to negotiate to keep our little mascot, but.
Our little dog.
Peanut has gone to Woodbury, too. The only thing I wanted to update you on, I sent out an email to all of you today about HR Director interviews next week, some suggested questions. So if you have any, I will be out of the country starting tomorrow. But if you have any suggestions or questions that you want to add or change, just let me know.
Okay. And when do those interviews start?
You have two, the night of May 10th. And the third person was not available at all on that night. So that person will be May 16th. Prior to your regular meeting, we'll have an executive session that starts at 6:30. So for the viewing public, your regular meeting won't start until 7:30 in all likelihood.
Okay. Terrific. Board liaison reports. Sarah?
Yes, so Thriving Youth will not be meeting until later this month, so we'll have that update next time. For the Henry Homes and Royal Committee, we have been busy. The last meeting was on Thursday, April 28th. There are three architectural firms who have been chosen as finalists and will be preparing charrettes for presentation to the committee. The firms are KGND, Fuller &amp; D'Angelo, and Perkins Eastman. And these charrettes are to be presented on May 9th at Town Hall. They'll be presenting to the committee that night. And the committee will be choosing the firm to go with by May 14th. There have been five responses for the construction manager RFQ. And three RFP requests have been sent over to ONG, Fusco, and Turner Construction. And these responses are due back Thursday, May 19th, and then the interviews will be on May 25th. We'll be using tie and bond to do a traffic study for the schools. And then our next meeting, I believe, is on Friday, May 13th. We will not have a meeting this week.
You've been meeting a lot.
We've been meeting every Thursday, yep. And then individual subcommittees have been meeting in addition. So, yep, they've been busy, yeah.
Thanks for doing the minutes.
Yep.
John, you have anything for IT?
Yes, so IT, we were going to meet, I guess now last month in April, and I was gone that week and did not file the agenda for the special meeting that was required to reschedule that on time. So we're actually going to meet next on May 19th. And I'll use that time between now and then to get our subcommittees organized. I'll have more to report after that meeting on the 19th.
May 19th, okay. Right around the corner. Marcy?
We have not met at Ox Ridge since our last meeting, so no update.
Okay. All right. Public com. Oh, Mike! Are you muted?
He's coming.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you for coming, and thank you for coming to meet tonight. The Plaid Review Board met on April 14th. And we welcomed Ed Roschek to the group. We look forward to his contributions. Our greatest concern is the property we discussed before on Hollow Tree, immediately adjacent to the construction project. We met with some of the interested parties, folks who in part own that property. And we believe they are close to getting all the suitors they need to be able to sell that property, which will then alleviate that flood tradition.
Okay. Thank you. Kate, do we have any public comments?
I did not receive any. We do have Adele Khan. So Adele, if you wanted to make a comment, raise your little electric hand and we'll unmute you. Okay, I guess she's good.
Okay, new business. Jen Turneski is here to explain items two through seven for us. And thank you for joining us this evening.
You're welcome. These items all are related to what the Board of Finance passed as their recommended budget. The first item is a contribution from fund balance of $2.9 million, which would go into our reserve for capital nonrecurring to support fiscal '23 capital projects. If this is approved by you and the RTM, our estimated fiscal '22 year-end fund balance will be just over $26 million, which is 16.4% of the fiscal '23 budget. And our dollars in excess of the Board of Finance's 12% minimum would be just under $7 million.
Okay. Do we have any questions?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the request for special appropriation of $2.9 million to transfer out to other funds? Marcy moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Oh, Mike, sorry.
No, I was showing a yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to see that he's voting.
Yes, thank you. I will get used to this. Okay, so second item is to discuss and take action on a request for a resolution authorizing the refunding of bonds.
We do this every year. For those of you who are new to the board, this allows us to take advantage of refunding opportunities that could save the town money without having to go all the way back through the boards at that time to seek the resolutions because sometimes they're kind of time-sensitive. The $55 million is everything that is callable. We have about $14.1 million currently callable, but we're putting the full dollar amount in there if for some reason we are able to do advance refundings or take advantage of any other opportunities. We wanted the most flexibility. So this has already been approved by Board of Finance. It's before you now, and then it will go to the RTM at their budget meeting on May 9th.
Okay, any questions?
Do you have a sense as to what savings you'd get from doing this initial refunding of $14 million?
It's actually, when Jim Palin looked at it, there's really nothing worth refunding at the moment. So we don't anticipate any refunding. This would just give us the opportunity to do so.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the refunding of bonds? Sarah moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Okay.
These guys are so energetic, I just decided I'm not going to move in. I don't move anything.
Put them on the spot. They'll be moving them after the...
Now that you've said that, you got it. We'll let Mike second.
When Mike's here, we got the Energizer bunnies over here.
No, no, you got it. We'll let you do it. Moving this along here, John.
Okay. Item number four. Discuss and take action on a request to approve an appropriation and bond authorization of $451,110 for Darien High School track repairs.
The Board of Education requested $450,000 as, for a project in fiscal '23. The Board of Finance has chosen to remove that from the budget and recommend that it be funded with bond funds. The total amount that you see of $451,110 is inclusive of estimated issuance costs.
Jen, are you...
Question?
Go ahead, Mike.
Just, just quickly, I didn't see those Board of Ed meetings. I feel like that track was replaced rather recently. Does anyone know the reason why all of a sudden it's $450,000 worth of repairs?
I don't know when it was last done, but this is a total renovation and repair of the track, not just kind of... It's not more maintenance-type item, it is a full renovation.
Yeah, Mike, I think there was some storm damage. And so there was some work done, but this is a complete redo. Jen, is this a, do you have an idea if this will be a 20-year or a 30-year?
20.
It'll be a 20-year.
Yeah, the useful life is only estimated at about 15 to 20 years, and we would try to match the term of the bonds. The 30-year is really only for major school renovations, and this one qualifies. Keep asking though.
Okay, just keep, keep asking that. Okay, any other questions? Sarah? Marcy?
Jen, do you have any idea when this project would start?
I don't know, because that's managed by the Board of Ed.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the request for appropriate, for an appropriation and bond authorization for $451,110 for the Darien High School track repairs?
Someone?
Thank you, Mike.
There you go, John.
John seconds.
Broke them down. We broke them down.
That's every six months.
Oh, no, it'll be...
That was exciting. Okay.
You have to ask for the votes.
Thank you, Jen, okay.
No, no, all in favor.
All in favor, sorry. Caught up in the excitement. Mike, all in favor? Mike's in favor. Right? Okay. All right, unanimous. Next item is to discuss and take action on a request for an appropriation and bonding authorization for $752,350 for sidewalk repairs and replacement.
In your budget that you put forward, you had $750,000 for sidewalk repair and replacement. And the Board of Finance has chosen to pull that out and recommend funding it with bonds. And the difference that you see, the $2,350, is for estimated issuance costs. We have bonded sidewalk repair and replacement the last two years, totaling about $1.25 million. And on these, typically, we would replace with the same material. And the useful life is about 20 years if they use asphalt and about 50 years if they use concrete.
What were the costs, Jen, to do this deal?
About $2,000 for issuance costs.
Okay. Any questions for Jen? Mike, any questions? Nope?
Nope.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the request for an appropriation and bonding authorization for $752,350 for sidewalk repairs and replacement? John... Okay, wow. John moves and Mike seconds. Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay. And next item up is discuss and take action on a request for an appropriation and bonding authorization of $120,375 for sidewalk installation.
Again, this was $120,000 that you had put forward in your budget. The Board of Finance has removed it and recommended bonding. We're estimating about $375 for issuance costs. And we have done this in the past. We funded new sidewalks through bonding in fiscal 2020. And depending on the material used, the useful life will be 20 to 50 years.
So are they separated because, well, obviously, they're separated because they're new and repaired, but is it based on the life?
No, just new versus... And when we say repair, it's, when we, I should say, when we say new, it's putting a sidewalk in where there hasn't been a sidewalk before. The repair and replacement is not so much repair, it really is replacement of existing sidewalks.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for Jen?
Nope.
No? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the request for appropriation and bonding authorization for $752,350 for sidewalk installation?
No, no. The next one. The 120.
The 120, it's $120,000.
Oh, I'm sorry.
$120,350.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, for 100, do I have a motion to approve and request an appropriation and bonding authorization for $120,375 for sidewalk installation? John moves. Mike seconds.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up is item number seven, which is to discuss and take action to request a mandatory referral from planning and zoning for the purchase of real estate. Kate?
So anytime we want to purchase real estate, you need a mandatory referral from planning and zoning. And what it does is, it's you asking them whether or not this purchase is in line with the plan of conservation and development. The impact it has is on the vote of the RTM required to purchase the land. So if we get a favorable report where planning and zoning says, yes, this piece of, purchase of this piece of property would be, you know, in accordance with our plan, then the vote to purchase the land is only a simple majority needed. If P&amp;Z were to say, no, it's not in accordance with our plan, you can still do it, but it would require a supermajority of the RTM to approve the purchase. So I fully believe that this would be in accordance with the plan of conservation and development in terms of acquiring open space, in terms of managing coastal resources. Those are just two of things. So this, once this happens tomorrow, I would send a request to planning and zoning. That then gives them 35 days to send back the report.
Quick question, you said a referral from planning, is there any good referral to planning?
I'm sorry, it's a referral to planning and zoning. Then they give us the report.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
They meet tomorrow? Pardon? Did you say they meet tomorrow?
No, I'm sending the memo tomorrow. Assuming that you approve this, the resolution, the request will go to them tomorrow.
Okay.
No further questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the resolution requesting a mandatory referral?
Someone?
Okay, Mike moves, John seconds. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, Kate will explain the next three items. We're going to, item number eight is discuss and take action on the proposed resolutions regarding the Hinley Building Committee.
So each one is the same thing, basically. And we actually did something similar related to the, I think it was the Royal project, a month or two ago.
Yes, the Royal Roof Project, yeah.
Right. The grant consultant that the building committee has engaged pointed out that the state, what the state wants in terms of the resolution, their wording is slightly different from what we have approved. In some instances, I really, not sure I see the difference, but the state wants the RTM to approve these. And I said, do they require the Board of Selectmen to approve them? The state doesn't care, as long as the RTM approves them, but our normal practice is you recommend to the RTM. So I feel like the RTM would want that recommendation coming from you. So basically, each one of these is you recommending that the RTM take the, update the resolutions.
The state is asking us to have this language in place.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? No? All right. So we'll take each one of them separately. Do I have a motion to approve the resolutions regarding the Hinley Building Committee? Sarah moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Next item up is discuss and take action on the proposed resolutions regarding the Royal Building Committee. And I think we are good on...
Yeah, it's the same rule.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the resolutions regarding the Royal Building Committee? Sarah moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. And do I have a motion to approve the resolutions regarding the Hinley Building Committee?
Homes.
Okay. All right. Sorry about that. Do I have a motion to approve the resolutions regarding the Homes Building Committee? Sarah moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That takes care of new business. Old business is, we have on old business, we started a discussion regarding community values. I didn't want to let that get too lost. So I've had some people reach out to me and, and shared. And we looked at other towns to see what, you know, give us some good examples of vision statement, mission statement, and community value statement. So in front of you in your packet, you have a draft, and I would like your thoughts on it.
To me, vision is something you are looking ahead to. Something that you are thinking about growing and who you want to be. And when I read this vision statement, it seems more of one that is more concerned about protecting what we have had. And I don't know that it's reflective of where we want to be. And so that's my only comment on the vision statement.
Okay, so more forward-thinking.
More forward-thinking.
Okay. John?
Can't disagree with Sarah. We could probably incorporate more language there that gets to a forward view of the town, more so than what we have here. I think the mission statement is pretty clear. That's something certainly I've already kind of, I've certainly strived for in sort of my prior government work. I like the community value statement. It incorporates a lot of things that are both things that we've talked about as well as new things that are important to communities all over the country. So this notion of diversity in all facets of life, I think, is important. Language about sort of treating residents and visitors fairly and with courtesy and respect. I mean, it seems kind of straightforward. But the thing I like about this is that it's consistent with some comments I made before, which is, you want to have a community value statement against which people can anchor the way they treat other people or anchor the actions that they take or the behaviors that they exhibit. And this is the kind of thing, it feels like to me, that would really serve that purpose effectively, so that people could take a look at it and say, I would aspire to treat others or behave in that particular way. But we could also use it, and maybe this is the wrong word, but in a judgmental or assessing way, which is if someone deviates from the things that are described here, we can say, look, what you're seeing here or what's being exhibited in town is in fact not consistent with our community value statement. And that the perpetrators are the folks who are living outside the community value statement, they really need to straighten up. And they need to think about the language that is exhibited in this, in this particular statement. So I like it.
I agree with everything everyone's saying. I think, I do really like the community value statement. I think it captures exactly what our discussions have been over the past six months. It's been that long, close to four months. The mission statement, I think, is short and precise and definitely what I would hope for a mission for a town that I chose to live and raise my family in. And then the vision statement, I think, I think I agree with both Sarah and John that there could be some tweaking in a more forward manner for that statement.
For the benefit of those watching, can we read these aloud? Oh, sure, sure. Tell you what, I don't need to read all the, do we have them? Why don't you read first, you read second, and Marcy, you read last.
Sure. Okay. The proposed Town of Darien vision statement says the town of Darien seeks to grow in a thoughtful manner, protecting the natural and historic resources of the town that is beneficial to the community and respectful of the environment.
The draft mission statement says, "The town of Darien strives to continually provide high-quality, high-value services to its residents, taxpayers, and visitors."
And the proposed community value statement states that "Darien's sense of community is rooted in residents who respect one another, who welcome diversity in all facets of life, and are engaged in their community. The Board of Selectmen is committed to treat all of its residents and visitors fairly with courtesy and respect. The Board of Selectmen seeks to continuously improve programs and services that are accessible as well as environmentally and fiscally sustainable. The Board of Selectmen is committed to ensuring that the town is a safe and healthy place to work, live, and raise a family."
Okay.
Mike?
Mike, oh, Mike, I'm sorry. What are your thoughts? Forgot about Mike.
You're on mute.
Thank you. I agree with what you folks are saying, that I think it's a, I think it's a good start. I think it's good that we're, we're doing this and engaging in this endeavor. I want to think on it a little bit more, but I think it's a, I think it's a healthy start. I think we need to say to our community that their government is going to be leaders in making this a strong community where everyone is respected and where everyone has an equal opportunity to achieve within the confines and enjoy the benefits that the town provides.
Okay. My only recommendation, I guess, would be on the value statement is to...
Sorry, could you speak up?
Sure, sorry. My only recommendation on the community value statement would be to add three words at the very end, or four.
"The Board of Selectmen is committed to ensuring that the town is a safe and healthy place to live, work, and raise a family for all of its residents."
Okay. And we will, let me do a little bit of work on the first one to make it a little more forward-thinking. Okay. All right, great work. I am excited to, to get this project across the finish line and to have something where people, when they look, when they look up Darien, I want them to see this. I want them to see that this is what we stand for. And I look at the plan of conservation and development. It's a really, really important document that, that we use. We used it today. We use it as a touchstone all the time. And so as Sarah said and as John said, like, people will be able to look at this and see, like, is this, is this how we, our residents are living their lives? So thank you for your input. Really excited about that. Okay, Jennifer is here to discuss two transfers. And it's item number 12, discuss and take action on a request for a transfer of $28,828 to various salary accounts.
With the settlement of the Town Hall Employees Union, we have now paid their retro. They are at their increased wages. And this transfer request is what we need to make all the salary accounts whole as a result of that settlement. When we do the budget, if we have unsettled contracts, we put money in the salary contingency account. And once the contract settles, we move it into the department. account, and once the contract settles, we move it into the departments. So what we need to do here is about $25,000 to the general fund, just under $2,800 to the sewer fund, and just under $1,000 to the parking fund. And the salary contingency after this transfer will have a remaining balance of just over $55,000.
Jen, do you, do you see that account remaining at that level by the end of the year?
There may be a couple of minor draws from it for any maybe mid-year adjustments that have occurred, but nothing significant from that. We've moved everything and made all the accounts whole.
Right, you made the adjustments. Okay. Any other questions? For Jen? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the request for a transfer of $28,828 to various salary accounts? John moves. Sarah, Marcy seconds. All in favor? Mike, I, I don't see you, but.
There you go. There you go.
Okay, caught that hand. All right. Terrific. Okay. And so that was unanimous, Kate.
Thank you.
Okay. Jen is also here to discuss and, discuss and take action on a request for a transfer of $27,883 to transfer out to other funds.
This transfer is looking to move money from the general fund to the parking fund to cover some unbudgeted salary expenditures. The fiscal '22 budget assumed that we would have a parking ranger for only the second half of the year due to decreased revenues in the parking fund and decreased activity because of COVID. However, in July, there was a personnel issue that necessitated transferring an employee to another position, and the parking ranger position is where that person ended up. So we are looking to, they were budgeted in the general fund, and we're looking to move what was budgeted for them in the general fund for the first half of the year over to the parking fund, so that the parking fund doesn't face a deficit because of a personnel issue.
Okay. Any questions for Jen?
What's the long-term plan for parking staffing? I mean, just somebody, somebody who parks in the Northern Heights lot five days a week, Friday's pretty empty. It's clearly been declared a work-from-home day by the general business community. The week is getting a little busier, but I'd say it's 40%, maybe tops, as to what it's been historically. And maybe that's starting to become a long-term trend. Have you guys thought about what you want to do in terms of staffing or personnel assigned to parking for the town?
So come July, this employee will go back to the general fund, and we have funded the parking for fiscal '23, the parking fund has only the one, goes back to only the one employee. Until we see parking return to levels that it was pre-pandemic, I don't think we'd be able to support a second employee.
But your sense is that the parking load right now is manageable by one ranger?
It's manageable by one person, yeah. You know, we're enforcing, and, you know, we're still ticketing. We boot on occasion, but we're just not at the levels that, that we used to be. And for example, right now, because Northern Heights, the, the permit lot has not filled up on any day. We are not enforcing the daily parking, the rule that you can't park there as a daily person until 9:30.
Still have to pay.
You still have to pay, but you can park at, you know, at 8 o'clock in the morning, you can go down and park in the permit lot. So that was part of our ticketing routine, was multiple sweeps through the lots to first catch the people who were in the permit lot who should not have been, and then, you know, to catch other violations.
But with the extra capacity, it's okay to have those folks there.
Right.
Okay, thank you. I didn't have any other questions.
Any other questions? Okay. So if there are no other questions, may I have a motion to approve the request for a transfer of $27,883 to transfer out to other funds? John moves.
So move.
Mike seconds. All in favor? Unanimous, Kate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item. Thanks, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is to review and approve the minutes of the April 19th, 2022 regular meeting. Are there any edits, deletions, additions? Okay, seeing none. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Sarah moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Agenda review. Any topics board members would like to see on a future agenda?
No, other than to say I appreciated the flooding update today. That was great.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. And Jeremy will be doing a, a development update at our next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. And you should expect at the next meeting that the HHR committee will be coming in with requests for an appropriation bonding for the big number. They will be sending a presentation to you, but it probably will not be included with your packets. It'll come maybe a day or so later, but you will have the presentation before the meeting so that you can gather your questions.
Timing might be a little tight, but yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so I think they're planning on sending the proposal out on, on Friday.
On Friday.
That they, you meet on Friday, right? And the.
So we'll meet on Friday, the 13th.
And hopefully, so our, our materials for Board of Selectmen goes out on Thursday, but so this will be a separate packet. And collect your, collect your questions, and they will let you know in the packet, well, Sarah, you already knows, but they'll let you know in the packet when you, you should have them submitted by. I think it'll probably be Sunday night. Okay?
And what's this notice from the police commissioner?
Kate, is it, this will be on the next?
Right, so they want to, what, they said that they're requesting funding for some, the speed signs on, at the, two schools, they don't have them currently. But I need to talk to the chief because they are requesting funding, but they're not telling us anything other than that.
Okay.
How much it will be?
How much? And are they suggesting a source of funding from within their budget, or are they asking for requests, you know, funding from contingency?
Is the cost is for the speed signs themselves? Is the cost for the speed signs themselves?
The cost is for the speed signs themselves.
So by the school and up on Hoyt. They're the dynamic, so they tell you how fast you're going. And there have been, neighbors have requested this, so we will get. Yeah, we'll get a cleaner request to put forward. Anything else, Kate?
No.
No? Okay. If there are no other items, may I have a motion to adjourn? Marcy moves. Or Sarah moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.